Meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 to order. Could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Spende.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Bokey.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Mayor, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone on a truly beautiful night in Owatonna. I say that every week, but tonight truly is a beautiful day. And we're get right, right to work. So the first thing to do is to approve the agenda. There is one change. Item 2.5.2, it's a consulting services agreement will be removed. We're not quite ready for that, so that'll be removed from the agenda. So I would ask our motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Is there any discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda is approved. We have one proclamation this evening, and I normally would turn this over to the mayor, but I'm going to take care of this one tonight, Mayor. You. So coming up on September 19th, Thursday, September 19th, is the 2024 Quilt of Valor Day. And that's brought to, it's sponsored by the Owatonna Exchange Club. And the Quilt of Valor Day is, it's, there's a Quilt of Valor Foundation. It's a national organization that was created by a serviceman's mother with the idea to comfort veterans with the quilt. So every year, a number of veterans are, are given a quilt for this purpose. And they were, in 2022, there were five. There were seven given in 2023. And this year, there are nine recipients, and I'd just like to read those names. First one is Stanley Hansi from the U.S. Navy, Joe Faltesek from the U.S. Air Force, Roberts Fatanca from the U.S. Army, Roger Ruling from the U.S. Air Force, Harold Kirkfleet from the U.S. Army, Jim Leonard from the U.S. Army, Eugene Kispert from the U.S. Navy, Russell Cumberland Jr. from the U.S. Marines, and Thomas Koontz from the U.S. Air Force. So I would encourage you to recognize these nine veterans and for their service to our country. And if you see them, give them congratulations. So congratulations, Mayor. Thank you. Anything else for you tonight, Mayor? Not at this moment. Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. That consists of the city council meeting minutes, boards and commissions minutes, department reports, licenses, permits, and other miscellaneous items. All grouped together for the council to review prior to the meeting and vote on collectively. So I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Is there any discussion?
Greg, due to item 2.4.2, which is a resolution authorizing a contract from my business, I will, what's the right word?
Recuse yourself.
Sorry about that. I have it written right there. I'll recuse myself.
All right. So noted. Thank you, Doug. Any other discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. We'll now move on to action items. First up is the finance report, and it will go to Vice President Rainey for that.
Thank you. Checks over $20,000 for consideration tonight are as follows. $20,724 AMP's Future Incorporated, that it was for sanitary sewer repair at 610 School Street East. $22,971 Crane Creek Asphalt, and that is for asphalt. $2,317,798 Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, that's broken down as follows. $220 MPFA principal and interest payment, $2010 general obligation bonds of $582,224, and $220 MPFA principal and interest payments, $2023 general obligation bonds of $1,735,574. $96,845 neuroengineering, that is for wastewater treatment fund expansion services for July of 2024. $31,043 Owatonna Area Chamber of Commerce, that is the lodging tax for June of 2024. $25,000 to Robert and Sarah Schmidt, broken out as follows. EDA Tier 1 loan of $5,000 and an EDA Tier 2 loan of $20,000. $33,879 Dantec Consulting Services, that is for the Owatonna 2050 Comprehensive Plan. $56,959 Steel County Auditor, that is the second quarter 2024 LEC expenditures. $22,757 U.S. Bank, that is the entire organization monthly credit card purchases for June and July of 2024. Other expenditures tonight are $238,814 for a subtotal of $2,866,793. Added on to that tonight is HRA Housing Assistance Payments of $103,700. For total expenditures presented for your approval of $2,970,494.4. That completes my report.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. We've all heard the finance report, so I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion by Dan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Is there any discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the finance report is approved. We have one ordinance this evening. It's item 3.2.1. It is the second and final reading of the proposed ordinance 24-4 regarding the Oak Hill Planned Use Development. And it will go to Troy Cluckard from our Community Development Department. Troy?
All right. Thank you. This is the second reading of a request to rezone property from B2 Community Business District to PUD Planning and Development for Owatonna Hope Center. This is at 134 Southview Street. The former Mayo Clinic facility was purchased by Owatonna Hope Center and will be a number of different uses within that space, including shelters, clinics, and offices, kind of a nonprofit center for a number of our nonprofits there. So there were public hearings at the planning commission. City Council gave first reading approval of the ordinance, and this is the second reading. So staff would recommend approval.
Hey, thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy on this matter? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve the second and final reading of proposed ordinance 24-4. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Is there any discussion? There being none, as this is an ordinance, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Spende.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Bokey.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
So that is, was the second and final reading. That's been approved, so that will go into effect. That completes our ordinances this evening. We have four resolutions. The first one is item 3.3.1, Resolution 88-24, to set the date for a public hearing on proposed assessments regarding delinquent utility accounts. And it will go to Chris Boosie, our city administrator. Chris?
Thank you. We receive these requests from Owatonna Public Utility periodically. They try their best to collect delinquent accounts, but sometimes they're not able to, and so they are placed on their taxes. So this merely sets the date of hearing so we have proper notice for the public and property owners, and staff would recommend approval.
And the date of that hearing is Tuesday, October 1st.
Correct.
Are there any questions for Chris regarding this public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve Resolution 88-24. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Is there any discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item 3.3.2, Resolution 89-24, to accept bids and award a contract on the Vine Street Parking Lot Project. And it will go to Sean Murphy, our city engineer. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, we're requesting city council's approval of Resolution 89-24, and that's for the Vine Street Parking Lot Project bid acceptance and contract award. We received bids last Thursday and August 29th and received bids from five, five companies. The abstract for all five of their bids is within the agenda packet. With this project, we did have some preliminary conversations with a lot of downtown businesses, with Main Street, with Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, what some of those downtown businesses were wanting to see out of the project in terms of construction phasing, you know, how important was parking to them. And initially, when we started on this well over a year ago, the general consensus is if we can work it in, if it's not too expensive, we should really look at trying to phase the construction of the parking lot so we can maintain parking throughout the project. With the extended negotiations with the purchase of the lot at U.S. Bank and the subsequent short construction timeline that was given with that purchase agreement, we felt that there was some, some possible changes that we might need to make. We, we offered a bid alternate for allowing the contractor to take the entire parking lot without doing any parking phasing to see if there would be some lump sum reduction in cost or a shorting, shortening of construction timeline. We did not require construction schedules with the bid, so we can't really confirm if that's the case. But with that, when we received the bids, we have the apparent low bidder with Icon. And the second low bidder is Wentzel Construction. Wentzel Construction did put in the lump sum deduction of $15,000 that would subsequently make them the low bidder if council chooses to go with the, the deduct, which would be not phasing the parking and the construction of the parking lot. From the staff's perspective, we still feel that with the tight timeline, the completion date of November 15th within our purchase agreement with U.S. Bank, that we have the best chance to, to finishing this lot and having it paved this year if we give them the entire lot rather than having them phase that parking. We did reach out to the Chamber, Brad and Lisa at Main Street as well, to try to survey some of the downtown businesses. They were able to do that, and the general consensus was that they would prefer to have the, if, if given the option, have the parking lot done this year rather than give up parking or keep phased parking in and push the project out to spring. There's no guarantees either way, but staff does feel that we put our best foot forward by giving the contractor the, the entire lot to construct and, and not having to, to phase that parking and the subsequent construction of the parking lot. So if council does approve and award the contract based with the lump sum deduction, Wentzel Construction would be the apparent low bidder at $1,071,477. A majority of these, or a majority of this project will be paid for out of our ARPA funds, so the American Rescue Plan Act that the city received. There are some reimbursable costs in here from OPU as well. So depending on the actual quantities installed, we might not actually have to put anything in above our ARPA funds that we have set aside for the project. With that, staff recommends including the alternate bid item and awarding the contract to Wentzel Construction of Owatonna with approval of Resolution 89-24.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Nate?
Historically, we've had good luck with Wentzel and their ability to stay on track as far as time goes, as long as weather isn't a disaster.
That is correct.
Motion we approve.
Motion by Nate to approve Resolution 89-24. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank Sean. Every time I see something that comes in substantially, or at least, you know, under the engineer's estimate for a project, that makes me feel good. So thanks for your hard work on that.
No problem. I, I'd like to take credit for it. I think that's just a bidding climate. So, you know, we, we do the best we can with the information we have, but, you know, fortunately, with five bidders on the project, we're, we're bound to get something that's either close to or underneath, underneath the engineer's estimate. So, yep.
Dan?
The Chamber and Main Street constituents are, would go along with the Band-Aid approach, tear it off once and tie it up for one season?
I spoke with quite a few of them. Of course, that's not optimum for the fourth quarter. Do I need to go on the mic? No, no.
People at home would like to hear you.
All right. Hello. Yeah, I spoke with quite a few of the business owners downtown. And while, yes, it would be great to have parking happening while the construction is happening, it was overwhelmingly for getting it done for this year. There are some concerns about where to park, and so I can address those later as far as a map for parking downtown so that I can send that to all of them. And there were a couple of people that said, I don't know where we're all supposed to park. But I just said we'd work through that. They're very excited about the project, and they know it's going to create a much more pleasing aesthetic in that area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lisa. Dave, you had a question?
On that money from the American Rescue Plan, do we have, how much is left? What's the balance?
So, go ahead.
I don't know that.
This was the last project that we had. And was the original estimate 1.2?
Yeah, the engineer's estimate is 1.2 right now. It came in at 1.
There was kind of a timeline, too, wasn't there?
Right. At the end of this year. So there might be a little left since it came in under budget.
We can use it.
Any further discussion? Kevin?
I'll throw mine in.
Okay, Kevin?
No, I'm excited this is finally going to get done. It's hopefully, hopefully the weather cooperates and we can finish it this fall ahead of the OMC project. And it's, it's going to be great. So let's get it, let's get it started so we can get it done.
All right. Any further discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item 3.3.3, Resolution 90-24. That's the Vine Street Parking Lot Parking Hour Restrictions, and it will go to Troy.
All right. Along with constructing new parking lot is what those restrictions, parking restrictions will be. The Planning Commission, which is the board that reviews these situations and recommends parking regulations for downtown to the city council, did meet on this, had discussion on it. The whole parking lot is designed with a driveway in the middle, so it's in two defined sections. And we felt like if we can simplify it down for people so they know each area is a certain timeframe, that that would be most beneficial to everybody using it and the businesses. And they can point people, hey, there's long term, there's short term. So the west side was sort of designated as the long-term parking, the east side as the short-term parking. What the Planning Commission recommended was a 24-hour parking on the west side and then four-hour parking on the east side. And it's, it's easy to sign. It's easy for people to understand. There was some discussion about the two-hour parking. And I think the thought was, is we do have, most, all of our street parking is two-hour parking. That's the convenient parking. You need to get in and out or have a short period of time that you should park on the street. It's easy or convenient and more accessible on the street. If you're parking in the lot, hopefully you're staying for more than one trip or you have a longer appointment, and therefore the parking lot is kind of the designated spot for that. The 24-hour parking for our residents and employees. So we think we're covering the bases there by covering all the needs of those using the parking downtown. So the Planning Commission did recommend the 24-hour parking on the west side and four-hour parking on the east side.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Questions for Troy? Kevin?
I've actually got a question for Mr. Murphy on the 24-hour parking. What, how much notice do they need to have for, when, when you're going to post signs that it's going to be used for maintenance?
I, I would assume that, you know, from a parking pers, or parking lot perspective, we would apply the same rule that we have for closing off on-street parking. So it would have to be a minimum of 24 hours' notice.
Okay. And that would be the same for snow removal? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Doug?
Just a quick comment. You know, it's pretty hard to run a small business, especially in a downtown area. So thanks to Troy and all the staff for being responsive to the business owners down there. They wanted the four-hour parking, and we listened, and I appreciate that.
Other questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve Resolution 90-24. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last resolution this evening is item 3.3.4, Resolution 91-24. It's a final plat for the Oak Hill addition, and we'll go back to Troy.
All right. This is just the plating of the property for Owatonna Hope Center. It was previously four separate lots, one property, and so this is just plating it into one single lot. Nothing physically will change from the replating. It's just a different legal description, one that meets our, our subdivision ordinance. So staff would recommend approval of the final plat of Oak Hill Edition.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy on this final plat?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Doug to approve Resolution 91-24. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Is there any discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That completes our resolutions this evening. We have two miscellaneous items. The first one is item 3.4.1. It's an on-sale liquor license at Home 2 Suites at 230 Allen Avenue. And it will go to you, Chris.
Thank you. If you'll recall, our Home 2 Suites originally had applied for an on-sale liquor license, and they were approved by the council upon completion and a certificate of occupancy. We were then notified by the state of Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement that they should have had an on-sale liquor license and not the wine and beer. So we have all the documents that we need. Verification has been completed of their background, and the fees have been received as well. So staff would recommend approval of the $28.50 for the on-sale liquor license. This is a prorated amount for 10 months, and they can open up and be on their way. So staff would recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris on this liquor license? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. A second by Dave. All right. Is there any discussion? There being none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item this evening is item 3.4.2. It's the city administrator benefits package, and it will go to Mayor Tom Koontz for that. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you. We did a successful performance review of Chris in this year on February, and her salary increase follows the non-union employees' increase. But we haven't made any adjustments on her benefit package since 2021. So we're recommending, I'm recommending that we increase her deferred compensation amount from $10,600 to $12,000, effective 1/1/2024.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom on this benefits package? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
Yeah. I want to thank Chris for all of her years of professional service to the citizens of Owatonna. You have an extremely challenging and difficult job. You don't know when you walk in the morning what, what your agenda's going to be. You come in with an agenda, and, and that may change with phone call or an email. You represent the city extremely well, and hopefully we have you here for another 25 years.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
All right. Any other discussion? Now, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That completes our action items this evening. We now move on to staff reports, of which we have one this evening. And it's from, normally don't normally hear from, Jeanette Claus, our administrative coordinator. Jeanette, what did you want to talk to us about?
I just want to make a couple of brief comments. Today with, today I received several phone calls from residents wanting to file complaints or wanting to know what the process was, that they were, maybe a neighbor's lawn was too long, or one was the, there was animals, animals that were making noises and stuff, which would all be in violation of our city code. Those complaints are actually filed on our website. If you go onto the city's website, there's an option to register a complaint on, under the "How Do I" page. You just type it in. It is an anonymous request, or you don't need to sign and complete it. But that begins the process of our inspector going out, or the process of going out to see if that is in fact within compliance or not. So I would encourage everyone to get familiar with the city's website. It is very user-friendly, and it does give you that option. If you look at our packet tonight, actually, the pack, council packets for all the last several meetings is that inspection report that's there in the consent agenda. So there is a list that's looked at and reviewed and followed up on. That's what begins that process with making that complaint on our website. The other thing that I actually received a couple of phone calls on today, people were wanting to know if residential fires were something that they could consider doing now that it's fall and a little bit cool at night. Everybody wants to have a bonfire in the backyard, and they are there, too. The information with regards to what needs to be done or met, the fire department has information on their page with regards to recreational fires, you know, how far it needs to be away, how it needs to be contained, and what it is. But I would again encourage everyone to get familiar with the information that's out there on the website because there's a lot of useful information and to help answer your questions.
All right. Thank you, Jeanette. All right. That completes our staff reports. Now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, now is your chance. Come up to the microphone in front here. I'd ask that you sign in with your name and address and state your name and address before you start speaking. Speakers will be limited to two minutes to deliver their comments. Kevin here will keep track of the time. At 1:45, he'll raise his hand, and I'd ask that you wrap your comments up at that time. Those speaking are asked to conduct themselves in a respectful manner as they deliver their comments. Audience members are asked to refrain from reacting to comments, and the city council will not respond directly to comments in this venue or take immediate action in response to them. So the floor is open. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, now is your opportunity to come up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Todd Betker. I live at 2045 Third Avenue Northeast here in Owatonna. My wife and I have moved in there in May of 1999. And Third Avenue has kind of become a racetrack as, incident a couple of weeks ago. We've got young kids, grandkids on that street. Individuals seem to be driving extremely fast. They love the curves. They love the downhill. Curves by Grace Baptist Church. And we're looking for some input from the council, maybe the police chief, what we can do to get the people to slow down. We love our neighbor kids, and I hate to see something happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chris, could you talk to the police chief and?
Yeah. I will pass that along.
Follow up on that. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Looks like not, so we'll move on to council comments. Looks like not, so we'll move on to council comments. And first up tonight is Brent.
Nothing this evening.
Hey, Doug?
Nothing tonight.
Nate?
Just a reminder, kids are back in school, too, so keep an eye out for the kids running out and going about.
They like to do that.
They do.
Thank you, Nate. Dave?
Nothing to add.
Dan?
Nothing to add.
Kevin?
Nothing this evening.
Wow, you guys are going fast tonight. Chris?
I do have one thing. So the Owatonna Human Rights Commission is planning several activities to celebrate 2024 Welcome Week. The first one will be held at the Downtown Thursday Event, our final Downtown Thursday, excuse me, September 5th, starting at 5:00 PM. They're hosting a human library at the city's booth in Central Park. The goal of a human library is to foster, you know, conversations, awareness that challenges stereotypes and prejudices. So during that time, readers can check out a human book for a one-on-one kind of 15-minute conversation. Myself, I am serving as a book along with our police chief and fire chief, so I'd invite you to come and participate in that. They're also hosting a soccer game called Meeting on the Field. September, that's Saturday, September 7th at 6:30 at the Dyken Soccer Complex. There will be a food truck there. Everyone's invited to come, celebrate, play soccer, and have a good time. So just wanted to make you aware of those two things.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Mayor, you have the last word tonight?
Well, that's good, because I got a couple of them. You know, Owatonna is no different than some of the other communities in the state of Minnesota. Our small businesses are really, really being challenged. And the loss of Urban Loft downtown, a couple of the boutiques, really have an impact on our downtown area. I'm as guilty as everybody else. It's easy to go to the internet and order and have it delivered to your front door. But I think that I'd just ask all our citizens to stop downtown first and stop our businesses and see if you can find your product there before you go to the internet and order it. Urban Loft, when I was talking to her, her income was down a half of what it was the year before. So that just goes to show how tough things are getting in the downtown area. So I just encourage all of our citizens to shop local. The other thing is that with election coming up this fall, the Chamber and Rotary and People's Press and everybody do candidate forums. So on September 30th, on Monday, at Rotary, and that's always open to the public, the school board on October 7th, Steel County Commissioners, October 14th, mayor and Ward Two, council member, on October 21st, city council at large in Ward Four, October 28th, Conditional District One, November 4th, State Rep 19B.
And those are always good to go to. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, everything's been said that needs to be said, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So we'll see how long this takes now. They'd like to play this game with me, so. Who's going to be first up?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. This is going to get worse as time goes on. So we have a motion to adjourn. Are there any questions? I know there's no questions. So all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.